Thank you everyone, planning committee now for the Oxford Fender. Apologies for that. Thank you very much. The fact that the council of our who's been stepping into Buckingham society aren't we in the interest of tariff?
Yes, with your permission Chair, thank you very much.
Lovely to meet you. I'm very glad to be here today, anything on the agenda that needs to be planned?
The usual decorations. In case I ever get to hear a planning application.
I live in Partridge Close and there is an application for number 11 and I realise I've got no community interest but might be best if I pipe down on that one.
Okay, thank you very much. Minutes, four minutes of the last planning committee meeting which was Monday 15th August. They were received. Thank you very much. Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Buckingham local plan, receive a verbal report. We found that answer given at that bit there, do you know, but Laurie does.
Very little more to report back specifically, probably the way you say. And save the ten o'clock, ten o'clock and myself having to inform Monday to action going forward between my thinking what we're wanting to do. So yeah, everything that's on the list is being actioned at the moment, but nothing to call back on those actions.
Thank you, we're hearing a lot of course at the moment about how even the bulk inspectors of Buckingham neighbourhood plan. It's got higher qualities than the bulk, it's not policies in certain extent, certain matters like affordable housing. Take precedence, how strongly can we push this until our new plans are ready?
Listening to what's been said earlier, I think the strong where the developer has gone wrong is the 35% is actually saved in bulk itself, it's actually a saved policy. So bulk actually says Buckingham has 35%. So it's not a question of frankly, they argue that the NTP or bulk, it is actually in the bulk. So they haven't actually, I kept, I worked out exactly where it is involved, but they reiterated that. This is the policy that is saved in the NTP and we reiterated that in bulk. So yes, on that one, 35% we have had in bulk until we have some change currently in the plan. In relation to the legal jostling between the competing ones. We go away on strategy. The neighbourhood plan has to go on strategically, if not general conformity with the local plan. Therefore, the local plan and as far as more recent that would be the case. In non strategic. My understanding would be that bulk could still be claimed to be the most recent and therefore it would carry incidence. But that can change depending on, obviously planning inspector takes a different view. I think the court's, however it went that far, I think it is quite clear that it's the most recent. Whether there's a clash between them, but the hope might be that we could make sure that there isn't a clash between them.
So that is a design vision, design statement?
Again, what else is strategic, so we're entitled to always have a different plan. But if we are not in conformity with bulk, again, my understanding is bulk could take resistance if it applies to Buckingham and if it is in as a safe. It could not seem to be in general conformity, so we're absolutely polar opposites. I think bulk would have to take resistance, but it's very interesting what about second guess that.
One, you Karen, I think that we need to start looking, discussing other issues, I think. Once I get responses to questions that I've done, can we bring those responses back? Because I'm concerned judging by my memory of the responses I've received that we, we, we need to consider it. Because if we are going to put together a neighbourhood plan, huge highways questions which need to be established. And there's some huge financial judging by our past prejudices. We can't spend money once, we spend it twice and it would be awful if we were not fully involved in it. I think what I would do is provide the information to the office and then bring it to a future meeting through the chair, vice chair to try and discuss how we're going to do those highways issues. Because I think the way the town moves and the way the traffic functions in town has been achieved to whether our plan going forward is sustainable beyond time that it's done. And I think there is always commonality of the limitations which you're not privy to. And I think I'll put, make one of the written questions, responses back and we'll bring them back in, go through them in detail and see what we do. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Sharon? Thank you very much, Ega.
Excuse me this evening, it's the Glasgow September weekend and my notes have gone. Don't keep me getting rid of it.
We're, we're, we're going to.
You know, you're on YouTube, you just said that. Some of that will probably should. Thank you very much.
We move on to item five, action reports, action reports after the attached list, we've all seen it. Street up in Tinder Road, agenda item five, I'll give you that then. Enforcement reports and queries. You notice one, Madison Street, still isn't quite sorted out, the reports. The place in Woodford, the match day, some on the stable door type is listed. Care room access, Corvo's Meadow, the last council, how did you could update us? Okay, thank you, Catherine. We're still waiting to hear from Buckland matter, the football club about the decision. Good, so they'll come back to us. And finally, over there with Way, we raised the matter of the Crown Parish's charter with Dick Faber and we've sent a letter that was still waiting for response.
I think that'll become more clear when the written response published in the cabinet. But just on information basis, I, we did raise a hearing about the town centre lights. I think they're going to actually be repaired soon, because when they are, we're not going to stand under them, the ones along by. And enjoy the streetlights, we haven't had to about two. Of course, they're going to repair that, might be next year.
Thank you, Catherine.
Just, just moving back to one ministry and the wooden door that is now there. I take it as it's not compliant with enforcement, enforcement themselves will do deal with that. Okay, but I was thinking Catherine, we don't have to take explicit action ourselves that that will be taken care of.
Oh yes.
Thank you very much.
A little bit stronger. Thank you, anyone else on the action list? Number five point one then, this is the letter from Stephen Broadbent. Cabinet, November to Transport, I said Fabric earlier, but it's been more Broadbent. And he made this point in the, towards the end of the letter. He's looking now, it's anticipated any future development within Tinder Road industrial park also requires section two that made agreement, which could then include provision of lighting. Currently on the section of the road, so that's important. If this county drive did go here, that, that would obviously affect the way we're proposing it. It would have a job.
Just to say that if the speed limit had become 30 miles an hour. This was travelled in 20 seconds is 268. And then it would have been less than the current gap. And then it would have been a reason correctly properly being putting in street lighting. So I'm wondering, is that the reason why it was 40, not 30? Because then they didn't have to put in white in a part where.
Cynical.
Yeah, I'd say, but it's true, Andy. And if you can't get more cynical, you get older. But I would also say that why is it measured on cars? Surely street lighting is really good with the benefit of the density assistance. Not by cars, it's when you're completely broke, it's 22nd car travelling 40 miles an hour. We're talking about a person pushing a pushchair at three miles an hour, which should be the big, that actually matters.
According to international guidelines. Margaret.
Thank you, currently if I'm wrong, but it is a 30 mile an hour speed limit, don't they have to have street lighting? So you know, again, that's silly. And that they didn't want to reduce it to 30, so they, because of that extra cost. But I think there was a ray of hope in what was said about the 40 mile per hour reduction, only to 40, not 30. Because they are promising to monitor it, aren't they, and to rectify it? So there, there is a glimmer of hope there and then hopefully we'll get the street lighting one way or another.
Thank you, I was just going to say I had a very nice few days in North Wales during August. And during the, in the very rural parts of the Chilene Peninsula. The villages and the, the speed limit on the roads go from 60 to 40, quite a distance away from the, the start of the the, the actual village and then to 30. So that, that is something that they, they've obviously sorted out there. So they're not going straight from 60 to 30 and they have got this, this 40, 40, short, short gap of, short, short piece of 40 mile an hour road. On the entrance to, to every village that we, we went through.
Yeah, I was working in Grumwood last weekend, we're going down through West Sussex, that's all the same, they do, they do come to, they do the staggering.
Yeah.
Well, even though it's a whole lot of these villages, I've been producing all now 20. Just miracles.
And Cornwall too.
Yeah, I think the clarity on the 30 which wanted was a disaster. It was the police report which was not supported to the local authority. Local authority then stored for a considerable time, then we had a false announcement, didn't we, of it being 30? And, and a roundabout, because people didn't read the paperwork correctly. And then we had the 40 deferred in April. And then the decision was taken not by the cabinet member, it was taken by the leader, I believe, of the council, so. But I think Margaret may have absolutely right, it did say they'll come back and, and, and we need to have a suitable period of time. Irrespective of all other things that might go on on the road, is actually go back to and ask them the question. At what stage would it be suitable to come back to discuss it again? I think at the moment, as it's only just in September. I think if the decision notices in September became active, so the signs will change it there very soon. I've seen it on my paperwork. Those signs like to change it there very soon, 30 or some 50 or 60, whatever it is, 40. So the signs are going to change anyway. So at that point, we need to discuss what is a suitable period. I think that something perhaps we could do in six, twelve months maybe, write back to them, have a suitable period since it's been in. You know, what are the monitoring they've done, X, Y and Z? And, and then other things may have taken place which would strengthen our case.
Thank you, Robbie, we're making a better, okay. Anyone else on the street lighting? We want to number six, Tractor Road is roundabout. Catherine has given you a spring ground on the head, has it not been separated? I mean, I think John, you'd probably like to start on this.
It's, well, it's larval, isn't it, it genuinely is larval, it's going to cost a store fortune too. Because we all know the land falls away very secretly from that typical point. And to put that road in with, with enough of a kind of, you know, bit on the side of the road. It's going to cost, it's going to cost a lot of money, but no gain at all. It's just a waste. Frankly cannot understand that anyone is just.
I, I used this roundabout for at least 30 years when I lived at Orbital, I came into Buckingham, I've been in Buckingham now for eight years, I've never seen traffic chewing to get into Buckingham, walk around about. People either go left, they go straight on, but they're right, it's never a chew. And why they want to put in another turn to lane in, in the hope to cure the traffic for them walking around.
Because they don't know the area, because they don't know the area, do they, that's why.
It's a bit called, Robin. I managed to unlock this document and I did just recently manage to make Catherine available, the Buckingham Transport Plan. What I would suggest is that, for you Chair, is that Catherine circulates that transport plan.
No, I'm just going to use it.
No, I stopped copying. A reason I say it, as we go through all this, without the cases coming forward, I will lose it again.
Did you give a hell?
No, I stopped, I'm not that cruel. It took me, it took me a while to get one which unlocked, so that you've got all the documentation.
It doesn't prove the technical systems.
The systems, it took me some days to unlock it, that's why it wasn't in the agenda. But I think that proof, Catherine, it should be circulated to all the members of the committee. Because it, it's a document that as we get other changes and applications, that you can refer to it. And it's got all this information in it and it's all just in my eye, but it's no use to everybody else with it. You know, and Catherine will have it, but it will just mean you shouldn't bring your own views to bear much wrong.
Do you remember the first to take up this any, for the moment? Or is it, did it, what it is?
Yeah.
It's already been approved with section 106. Yeah, okay, thank you for that plan. Right, can we move on then to planning applications, we've got a lot tonight. After a discussion with town clerk. I will, if there's not any more contentious plans, I'll propose it actually in a second bit and we'll just ask for approval. Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. So let's look at number one, Pop Angel. This is a company that was called Pedant Suspension, they're no longer there, there's an application. Turn this into tears as an intervention as it were, late scale gymnastics. They've got 250 members on the waiting list, out of 231 members. They've got plenty of parking there, at least 12 parking spaces. And there are 74 letters of support which are not pro forma letters, they're all quite, quite different, which is interesting to know. We just met at the other side, the economic development team was not convinced that it's been advertised long enough. And although they're against the change of this, they do welcome two full time, half time jobs though. But it's in your hands, committee.
Yeah, I was interested, she also has two apprenticeships, licence on British gymnastics, of course, not my first.
It's something, yeah, correct.
I was, I was just going to say when my daughter was little, I, I struggled to find anywhere in the Buckingham area for her to do gymnastics. I would have had to have taken her to Milton Keynes, which I couldn't do. And so I fully support this, I think it's something that we, we need to be encouraging our young people to, to be able to.
Stay on something there, Margaret, is it? I second it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That's very nice. Thank you for the suggestion, offering. Right, the next one, that's for the 14 Portfield close, this has been done. We, we had a, because of the climate constraints, we had a quick word round by email, everyone, this is placing of a mobile home in the large garden, 14 Portfield close, we have no objections to, and I wish to speak on it.
But on behalf of the Buckingham society, they're not particularly against it, but they do wonder whether it ought to be a condition about limiting the time that it's on site now, whether that's broken or not, I leave to the meeting, but that was the Buckingham society's thought.
So it doesn't create a precedent?
That's right, that is, there's certain other properties, yeah, it's not done then.
Well, that appears that then. Second, all those in favour? Thank you. Sorry, I'm doing, Robin, I'm doing. Can we take that automatically?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what I have, I mean, I'll be mine, never be helped by. Thank you, I managed to, with a better perspective, that version has already been decided in our absence, as it were. Unfortunately, Catherine did try to get none of the planning applications delayed because of the death of Queen and of course Monday being a back holding. They did with most of them, the response slipped through, it was actually approved on the 15th. It's 14 Portfield close. And I know that discussing it with all the Buckingham society, it's a great improvement for Mark. It was getting into that room. So I proposed it. Seconding, have no objection, seconding. Thank you. Item four, number one, I don't close. Sorry, just looking at my screen, yeah, oh, this, this is the fence that's been put up alongside. Number one, I don't close. Now, interestingly, the two objections, both of them brought attention to the fact that the application that there was no vegetation or trees had to be moved, and yet this is Google's previous team, it's quite clear there was vegetation on this. You'll see the pictures of Catherine's been given here. Fence post of 2.3 metres, the fence itself is about 2.1 metres. If you know what Buckingham neighbourhood plan restricts to 1.8 metres for high fences, so. Anthony?
Yes, thank you Chair, number two, Mallard Drive has been the subject of great discussion. And yet from a visual point of view, it's very similar where you've got a very tiny little bit of verge. And then, and then very close to it, a close boarded fence. And I would also suggest that this is really a landmark building on the corner. And as such, really should have retained its original brick wall appearance. And I would suggest that we should object to this on the grounds of spoilage of the street scene. Or the estate scene, I think is an even better expression.
Yeah.
John.
Yeah, agreed, this would be, I don't think the same co-sells applied to this piece of land, applied to the land at 2 Mallard Drive. So I think for all the same reasons, we should object to this. I noticed it and the roof is a street sign. This, this is sort of garden shed, but it's obviously not a garden shed, it's got a roof that seems to be further to almost not having it properly, so. And yes, so there was vegetation along the edge, so water was many a time. And they just ripped out the vegetation equipment, I think very ugly structure. So absolutely.
And what we don't know of course is how much of that is his territory.
It doesn't matter because of the way it was set this.
I can just draw your attention to that for me, informed, we work, we work in portal. He said it's a nice form of the structure that's not in keeping a good manners estate. Adjacent to the pathway could present obstacle to any large vehicle, such as fire ambulance, so that if using the pathway, there are removable follards there. But the structure in question erected the passageway is now severely compromised. And he believes that this structure has been erected on what was assumed to belong down going to the council, to the Buckinghamshire council.
Yeah, all of that.
So I propose to reposing. Seconding, seconded, all of it in favour? You know, Robert, it's staying, even if it's.
How do you do this work? It really is short.
The next two we take together, Kenny said that public housing, public market build and Morton Road, it's a local landmark. One of the applications is where the other is a solicited building. Highways is happy with it, it doesn't, it's, it's definitely reflect on the traffic and will have ample pedestrian influence. I think I propose to approve it, seconded, all in favour? Thank you. The next two applications also considered together because one of the listed building, 15 Hunter Street, University of Buckingham. This is the World Trade Centre. Attached university, it's got an empty space at the moment in the middle which they propose to fit in. Anyone have any comments on this, Buckingham society?
No problem, quite happy.
In that case, I propose to approve it, seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? If they're not anything. Right, again, two more applications to go, 14 Markets Square, this is their clock to funeral building. It's a listed building, we've entered the second application, display of complication sign and existing hanging sign. It's retrostated, they've done it already, but. Anyone have any comment on that? Buckingham society has no view?
No, they're happy.
Good, in that case, I propose to approve it, seconded, seconded by Anthony.
Chair. When Robin returns, just pretend we've got to the end of your agenda. I'll get the camera light for two minutes.
The next one is 90 Water Road, it's number 11 on your agenda. It's a variation of condition to the plans that we've already done. Household application, part two, part single story side and road extensions. Catherine points out, it's a very interesting combination of roofs. With no danger at the front. My only observation is I regret the loss, loss of a tree there, a very healthy tree in the corner that's going to come out and make root. So perhaps we could also, another tree being, well, yeah, also in this place. I would then with that attached, post we that took the objections, thank you, seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everyone except Robin is at the same, thank you. I said, Robin, we're finished. And I do the same. Right, number 12. There are car, four gate island road. It was a household application for demolition, existing garden, single story side. My extension, direction of two stories side extension, conversion of garage to living accommodation. Rebuilder front port, particular for part single, part two story through extension of the 50% increase in the building, John.
I mean, I'm sure all of us who know this house would be glad to see it being renovated. Just a quick query, the loss of the garage, does that have any impact on arming spaces?
It's got loads of space.
It will require the use from garden.
Okay, does the, does the owner know that? Is he in the application?
It's in the application, it's shown as a heavy frontal.
Right, the only point I make is the roof is not subsidiary. But this, I don't think anybody could get around that, so there are places that can be made for having it in. That, looking at the drawings, it improves the house.
Thank you, just the Buckingham society indicated that they would rather like to try and have a bit of green at the front, the way it's being designed. And certainly they'd like the, you know, they're retaining the wall, but a little hedge or a buried hedge, you know, with berries on and that thing. Would just give it some local character. But they're not saying that there's anything wrong, but they just made that little plea.
Well, I, I support that, so, anyone else have a comment? No, I would then support the application, but put in the right about with like system, are you?
I was, I was just going to say, from the look of it, the garage wouldn't be very much use, the existing garage wouldn't be very much use for cars these days anyway, so.
So I'd prefer to support this, with that, I'd seconded by Anthony, all of it in favour? So Rob, so Robin didn't extend it. Number 22, swimming little lane, this one's on Bore's estate. Household application, it poses long conversion of rear door mat. With lights. What it has got is a massive flat roof door mat. Which is little trees side of the building. Done with the second freezing. Anthony, the Buckingham society. Anthony, the Buckingham Society members?
The Buckingham Society are not happy with this one. I think the technical term is blimey exclamation mark, an application already. But certainly, um it appears from Roger Newell's comments on this, that it's con- uh contrary to design policy B two about. Um and everybody agrees it's somewhat of an eyesore. Bucks up the street scene.
It's worth pointing out, there are houses around it that have terrible door windows, that we couldn't get around what they need to do during that. They're not going to have those windows at the front. Or the roof, yeah. But um based on what Buckingham Society is saying, my views on this plan. Um I propose that we, yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed, seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everybody except Robin, who is at the same, thank you. Um eleven Partridge Close, this is the application provision of a single story blast group, they locate on the elevation. We're planning, notice, haven't gone up this one here, they've, Catherine, with that, have provided it. It's not, not yet any made this comments, but um it's just basically, they've already got the deck out the back and it's with the glass cover. And it's actually quite a classy piece of work. Anyone have any comments?
It's not attached to the house either, it's just.
I mean, I propose then that we that we approve that, seconded by Anthony.
Um can you get somebody else to second this one? Because I.
That's the one you can.
Yeah, that's true.
So you can second it. Thank you very much. All those in favour?
So just start by.
So Anthony. Thank you, that's everybody except Anthony and Robin, we're both staying.
Staying.
Thank you. Goodness. Um fifteen, this is number eight, Ren Close, it's got bad news. Again, this is the only other patient tonight that hasn't yet got a planning notice. Um it's proposed a single story five product section. The design of the houses around here, normally they've got a pillar of porches, um which could be a loss. But the house right next door is already had its garage and house joined by the front porch, and that pillar's gone there already, so it would be difficult to object to it on Janus Street, so complicated and done by someone else.
I think we're using the, the number two.
Well, well, anyone, any comment? No, I propose that we, we accept that.
Yeah.
Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Everybody except Robin. Right, the final actual planning application is that if I did build close, household application, a single story side extension. It will have a flat roof, um built of rubberized material, but it is quite tucked away from everything. I know we don't like flat roofs, but it's difficult to see how, possibly could do it. Catherine, you like, you mentioned that this afternoon.
Yes, and the garage has picture, and this is being built on the back of it. So you'd have to have to demolish the back half of the roof and have a, always get a different angled slope to cover both. Which then wouldn't be parallel to the main house roof. So it's definitely unpleasing as a front roof is, I don't have a sense of.
It's quite well hidden, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
To go around and it just builds a natural.
Yeah.
Anyone you can, no, in that face, I suppose we agree that, seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Thank you, everyone, but Robin is staying. Um this is not for consultation, as they say, self-conscious, this candle could cause. Um suppose non-material amendment to remove the basement floodgates and fill the opening with concrete to match the existing level. Prevent leakage flooding the basement car park. There's quite a big statement from the Dimmies partnership about why they need to do it. The gates have failed time and again, the seals have perished. And it's now leaking, and the manufacturer supplier of the gates has gone into administrative. Um so what they want to do is basically replace the gates with concrete. Um we were talking about this this afternoon, but how, how would, how would you bring this? Because you're not only, water comes over the top of it in high floods, or there's water, it's Catherine poured it out, water does come down Bridge Street. Goes down the ramp into the car park, yes, they've got paths, but Robin, normally you have something to say on this, or can't recall. Are we talking about, is it a planning application? Yeah, you can talk about it, you don't have to, but um.
It's a variation of the original proof, but it's not a consultation, but I thought that these members ought to know about it.
And that's two thousand and seven.
The floodgates that go to exterior.
What I know is that the, what I know from my conversations with Guinness is that that they, you know, they try and do what they can to remove the flood, and they've also, they've probably come back at some point with their grad application. The generators off the floor. Generators are still within the vertical area, but they were not allowed to, um they couldn't do the repairs. And, and an application, so I understand they've come back, they've also got some problems in the building, which they're going to do with it. My view is that um residents in there are a bit concerned at the moment, but anything that happens probably a good thing.
Well, and has the car park been usable?
The car park is usable now. Um we, we recall that we were all involved in the vision when it flooded, and then we had the car and went off the road, which I handed with the fire pilot. Many of the buildings in there are, many of the properties in there currently are being repaired because of structural damp within the building. Either the investment aid door or whatever, so whatever work they're doing in there, they're doing it gradually to try and repair it. There's an ongoing, I understand it, large case which Guinness have got with the regional builders, because many of the stuff which was put in, seen for, but when its application originally came to the town council, I voted against it. It's public record, um because I always did it flood. Um.
We've said that to them.
And, and no matter what litigation they put in, when they put in the designer car park at the time to flood to end water out or seem to be contrary to common sense, and as I've borne in the air, I didn't feel that I could do, put my name to it, you know, without, as ridiculous and humid to get, I mean, so I think whatever they do, it's standing to help make that a more habitable place for people, they're less suffering now.
I think we'll find a way regardless of what.
I won't say whether I'm saying, you know, I, 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 I don't, I'm minded to the fact that those residents have been having that and feel, and do a lot.
And it's not done, we're going to be honest, just it's, it's for the record, don't we, we want to make any comment, we can.
If they want to try something out, then try something else.
Perhaps, you know, you can just say, you know, it's.
If you're only only goal, it's just in there.
I would.
You've got to get the water out somehow.
Yeah.
I, I think it would be worth just writing to them, to ask them um simple questions like what advice they took this under and, and, and what they did. Um because the actual areas in that, from what I gather from memory, it's a long time ago since I talked to them, so I apologize, I didn't exactly precise. Is that it was supposed to drain water out, but the, when it was full of water, we all realised that didn't happen.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they're obviously going to stop the water coming in. So this, what we'll do is, when the water floods against the wall, instead of the gates going in, they let the water in very well. What they're going to do is when the water goes out, we let them back out, so it's changed the design a bit. But we're just write to them and ask them.
Well, the concrete, you know, the entire.
Exactly, because that's what's the problem, is it will mean that through most flooding instances, it would probably prevent the car park from flooding.
It was pouring in like a waterfall, wasn't it, the gaps, it was a waterfall.
Yeah, so this may stop some of it, and um if that means that residents don't have their car floating around in there, and they can get a good night's sleep when it rains, it's not too bad a thing, is it?
My concern is not for water coming out, or water coming down the street. Because naturally it goes into that entrance, and then probably exits into the car park, it's supposed to be.
So they have done lots of work at the moment, if you go round there. Um they're doing work on the um garden tubs and stuff around there, they're taking them out. Because um well, they, they're taking them out, but they're taking all the soil out of them. Because what they are is um, that there's a whole design issue around there that they're trying to correctly work around. Guinness have probably bought into a, a sour business venture there, I mean, say they lives and, and their residents are you know, some of the most
vulnerable.
That would be the right answer.
Well, thank you for the update, Robin, they do say, actually, in the um there's a mission that the environmental, this is not the current methods to be removed and filled with concrete, and that the aquatic, semi-aquatic areas um will be preserved and looked after, so. So thank you, we'll, we'll just make a comment along the way.
I just think we need to stay in touch with the upmarket's.
Very good point. Um right, items eighteen to twenty-four, all, they're all three applications, we felt were already binding and in order, they're kind of happy to.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, thank you. Right, um just Catherine, we've got some planning decisions that you'll see on the collection, a couple of them, um often they'll help them let it um which we had opposed, the example, the, 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 etc. We were overruled on that, permission was given, but the, given the minute it was closed, the buckle tail. Um we had, you know, we had, we had that side of the pre-planning application. The converting of the mill into apartments and six um townhouses, we built it on the car park, which is about a bit of a far length. So what last days, two market bill, which we had posed, that's behind the what was the NatWest Bank and opposite council offices. That was the change of use to duplex flats to two single flats. We opposed it because it's no longer mixed development, as per their ability policy, but um it was decided, no, that they could approve it. Um. Nine Addington Road, we had opposed, that was refused, and that, somebody may have noticed the wall had been taken down already. Yeah, so that, they acted quickly on that. Um it'll come out at the next meeting, but just information, two Mallard Drive, fence at the entrance to that estate, um that has been refused. And enforcement said that because they enforced it third time around, now that they've lost second chance, and Catherine, we've had been fourteen days, and the owner had agreed, we're going to remove the fence, and we're in state, it's gone. So that, that would be a lot, I don't think maybe you've got.
Wow, yeah, it bears to the previous application, so.
Yeah, and it puts a success.
And of course, we have the same thing up at um bench hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's good, as you say, that's one of the powers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um which Landmark Market Hill, the direction of seven houses, three flats, we posed, that's been withdrawn. And.
Then it's that same signage has been.
Oh, yes, yeah, that.
What's that, sorry? It's that same.
Same. What else, that's improved yesterday before. Um finally, um where are we? Yeah, the other applications have refused, twenty-two with a drive, remember, that came up, they wanted to extend the um driveway onto the road. That has been refused, but I think it's probably worth us telling you why it was refused. Um this is Anna Suter was the uh planning officer involved, and it's refused because the development would not comply with all relevant criteria. It would be located outside the cottage, the dwelling house. And what's interesting, they said that all, though Buckingham Town Council um could not, their comments, our comments could not be taken into account in the determination of the application. We nonetheless summarise in below reference, the deadline contradicted the African's stated ownership. The section of path had a raised curb and gutter. There's no application to remove the curbing, the mindset on the plan with that figures, there's concern that a lot of paying up to the road edge might affect drainage. So interesting, they can't take us into account, but they, some of it's. So thank you to Anna Suter for that, King go on, Chris is fine. Thank you, you're listening. Uh number nine, Buckinghamshire Council matters, receive news or Buckinghamshire Council, new documents, some information, Buckinghamshire Council members present? There's only one now after the council, Robin.
Firstly, um I'll give you some positive news, start with. Um you will remember that councillor Anthony Ralph and I, um some time back, um we were involved in a campaign about establishing the hospital beds and what to do with it, and to make sure we didn't lose any, and no one would respond to us from the health trust. In my travels and meetings, I attended a meeting this week. And the paperwork and the responses at the meeting suggested, not only will we correct some years ago when we objected to the removal of the beds. They are now going to restate some of the beds in Buckingham Hospital.
Oh.
And actually bring back some of the beds to Buckingham Hospital, which rather says they should listen to all of us in the first place. Um although I was fortunate to be a Buckinghamshire councillor, I wasn't speaking for everybody, I was speaking for everybody here, I wasn't, um I was minded that I was carrying the weight of everybody else's view. Well, I have done, I sent that document to Margaret today, and she'll probably wonder why I haven't sent it, because usually I haven't wrote anything on it for the reason why I sent it, um but um it didn't occur to me that I sent it. I was on a, another partridge, like sad note, um you will remember that um over a great number of years, um Catherine, um during the planning process, um helped us, um when we were commited on the development down Clarence Park, you remember that we all made comments about the disability access, Catherine pointed out how we can be improved during the development. And how many councillors, past and present, um councillor Strang Clark, councillor Smith, who was in here, and different councillors made comments and worked very hard to get Taylor Wimpy to um come forward and correct that. So what I can say in my own correspondence to Buckinghamshire councillor, um which, which dates back before election. Um and which, where I'd followed it, because what you all wanted me to do. Um we have succeeded in, as a council, have succeeded in getting the disability grant put in. But on a sad note, I'm less than impressed and unamused, say the least, that one of our shy councillors who um for, um well, fortunately took an interest in it, has claimed that none of the work over the amount of years that councillors of this town council have been involved in, done in, had any bearing on it whatsoever, and has announced that she managed to achieve it. But I'd say thank you very much for her support, um but it's disappointing because I, in all our actions I do personally, I try to be inclusive about what people do. Um and whatever, and it, it, and facts and correspondence and information and efforts, but if anyone's to be thanked, it's, it's Catherine, um for originally, we're not saying originally pointing this out during the planning process.
Yeah.
And started the ball rolling and explained to us how it didn't fit the disability access and whatever. And from that, it allowed us to start a story. So I would like to see Buckingham Town Council through the mayor and the chair of planning, and through to the people.
Louise is taking on Buckingham now, and she's worked just as well.
Yeah, yeah, but Louise.
But sometimes it's incredibly difficult to get them to answer.
Exactly, but Taylor Wimpy, to be fair to them, um whether it was um before, we've talked to them before the last election some months, but it appeared they moved forward. And I wrote and thanked them last week for the work they'd done. But it wasn't just me, it was everybody else, and, and I'm contrary to that. So I would like to hope that, in the same way that when um John was mayor of Buckingham. Um we all went up to, and went up to, to um Lais Hill, because we all fought as a team, as councillors, to actually achieve the slope of um at Lais Hill, and we caught an end, thank you, Catherine. Um, um I knew you cut in there, and um I would hope that the town council with our president. And um, I would hope that town councils with our president there would do, um, and with suitable people. Um, especially, um, Lisa, who's. Disabled, which is most relevant, uses a wheelchair, would go down there and give a skit to, that's it, thank you.
They were just finishing up this morning when we've done.
And I think that would it be possible that we get something done, um, to just let the town and do some suitable thanks to. People involved, especially those councillors who are no longer with us who were part of the struggle, like councillor Strang Clark. Councillor Smith, who served on planning and was nothing more than driven about these matters. Uh, and and was very supportive in his time as a councillor, so I hope that happens. And on a slightly, yes, um. Uh, whatever, um, if you, we have got some new piercing regulations in now in Buckinghamshire, so. Um, due to formity, so if anyone wants to have a piercing done, you can be assured that, and if you have your ears pierced in Buckingham. Or South Puck's, they can be able to say regulations, your piercing's done, so I think, uh, I, um, and we, we, we discussed that. At council and it was a mightily worthy debate and um, uh, about.
Is that dialogue by critique exciting?
No, no, it was, it was seen important enough to include the entire council, it wasn't done under delegated powers. And an office's decision, we all got to discuss, uh, where people can have their piercing. Um, and I think. We, we had the opportunity to discuss where people should have their piercing.
Premises, premises rather than um.
Um, I, 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 I must say, they were, they were giving some, um, conversation on it. But I didn't take the opportunity to speak about it.
Um, do you have any other things to report?
No, no, I didn't. Wasn't looking at the clinic and tell that on disability, but I'm very, I'm.
Yeah, I gave you a specific five minutes. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Um, updated list of opposed, ten corners told at the next meeting, updates from representatives on outside bodies, anybody? Anthony.
Uh, yeah, I, I have nothing to report, but it was interesting to see councillor Hardcastle, when you listen to him. He sounded pretty much like me reporting what is said, so we're all on the same team. Yes, absolutely.
Come on, what, what happened in the club? I've talked to the last place, like, coming to the meeting, was that, um, he's got thirty eight and a half thousand pounds, it's a forty thousand. For the judicial review.
Excellent.
The date's set, it's a day and a half set down in the. In in um. Courts in London.
Excellent.
So, um, so nothing to add, I don't know about anybody else, thank you. Um, Buckinghamshire Council meetings, your information, the North Buxar meeting, twenty four four meters capital again.
Mm-hmm.
Strategic site committee is all first of twenty, not all of the board. All council over this evening. Important, any new breaches, anyone else? I mean, um, applications probably told over the next meeting, the section one eight six quarterly update told over the next meeting. And then matters to report, any damage to the government's signature, the sound, access issues or other urgent matters, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, a work colleague works at Hamilton House. And um, she reported to me last night in work that when she was doing her other work at Hamilton House, she had to take a resident to the dentist in a wheelchair. And go from Hamilton House to the dentist, it was an ordeal.
Yeah, I can imagine.
And it was awful. So I've asked her, she advised the council to us. And that we'll follow it up for her because we can have a, a talk about it here.
Right.
Um, but she's not alone and she said if it had been another career, she, she feels that she's quite a strong woman. That that wouldn't have happened at all and it was just the root.
Pavements dropped, dropped curves, things like that.
Things that we've already talked about here.
Right.
Because I just saw, it's interesting that.
Still more bins as well.
She didn't mention bins, but it was, it was just state of the pavements. And I said, we'd already discussed that here, but it was just interesting initially.
Pull a report on it.
Yeah.
It really helps.
Yeah.
Robin.
Just on the access issue, so I would, uh, two questions, when I can deal with when they get back to me at the Buckinghamshire Council. Um, but one was. Um, to do with radar, a, a young man and lady in a wheelchair got quite disabled, gentleman. And um, and they were unclear. Um, I think they were fully aware they could use the tower facility and they are a town resident. And um, so I text them that when they write to me, I'll write to you, I'll just make sure we can get them, be able to use it because as the boy. Gunbank grows, they're going to need to winch and it's one of the things that that facility.
We, we deliver, they don't have.
No, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I've told them, I'm sure that I have forgotten how we can get people to get.
It says on, it says on the.
Well, she was unaware of it, they said, so, I mean, I. And I have a record that I am, need to go in there to pipe and John opened it. Um, and the, um, so, so I think, I think it's on there, so what I was thinking, where we should, um. Do a little bit of, um, communication with about that, because it's such a marvelous utility. And if people in the town are unaware of it, that's our, we should communicate it in some way to make sure they can get it.
Press please.
Um, yeah, would, would.
Changing places, have a website.
I know.
But places not.
I know, but if, if, I, I know that if you're dealing with someone who's vulnerable. Don't always observe everything else because you're dealing with the vulnerability. And really, you need, you, you, you know, but I'm not, I'm not going to discuss why the, the lady makes, I'm not, it's not a criticism.
Don't do it, it should be publicized.
Because the essence of the facility.
We used.
It's been a while.
Yeah, you know, and I think it would be, you know, um, something.
Yeah.
Any other access or?
Did one, one, one thing on access briefly, events will be waiting for a response to do with access. Um, in town centre, town park, road, not half. Um, when that comes back, it might be worth, um. Those events will take, we're going to do some press release around the response to do with the, um, what they get about the position of town centre and access. I mean, I'd like to involve in that response, actually to involve chair of planning and mayor in, in that response to the committee. So it's not just a person saying something, it needs to be a bit broader, um, because it is quite terrible. The town centre at the moment and we'll trip over and we don't know how to report here. And they've only got a phone and they haven't got internet and we invite them. But, um, that'll come back, um, I did, at that point, when it comes back to committee. I think to broaden the conversation, I think we'd better have other people involved in it.
Like, anybody else? You know, thank you then. Um, finally, chair, items to information. Um, Catherine's advised me that next Friday, the weekday, first September, there is. Finally, a meeting of the Buckinghamshire Council Planning and Environment Service update, it's a quarterly update. Um. It's from one to three P M on Zoom. Now Catherine is officially on leave, I won't be here, I'm on the way to Scotland. Would anyone like to step in and help, help out on that?
What, what is it again?
Right, it's.
Fourteen easy, we usually get.
Turning in.
Christine Harry.
There's nothing in terms of, it's just.
And a whole, um, parish people wanted to chant.
Yeah. Well, at the moment, Christian Irving will be getting on all right, so perhaps if I don't need to go and shout that for a question back.
But we, we, we are allowed to ask questions, that's the music, so we need to set that person in advance if anything.
No.
Real one on planning, staffing issues, lack of administration.
Updates update, important update, continuing to improve the programme, local planning progressions, biodiversity, net gains. The, the question to answer that we have a little. So, no, no takers?
Well, what, what day are we?
It's Friday lunchtime, one till three.
Oh, advertising to the board, they're coming with the council and everybody, nobody goes.
Well, I would support you.
You know, if we don't get anywhere, then come back to it, because I don't. I get, I don't need to talk about these things anyway, I don't, I just. Get in the way of any other person on the county house, if you want to talk about.
Thank you. So next meeting, Monday, seventh October, yeah, September, Patrick, your time is nine, nine forty four.